Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call a meeting to order.
I was about to.
I'm sorry. Made a mistake.
That's okay.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
I'm sorry. Missy will take over. January, we vote on our officers. So I'm out of order. Hey, Missy. Go yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to the first full board since the new year. Happy 2025. Certainly hope everyone's holidays were peaceful and pleasant and wishing the best for everyone here and, of course, in our community for a wonderful upcoming year.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the December 9th, 2024 Budget Workshop and the December 9th, 2024 Regular Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second, please.
Oh, second. Please go.
Okay, Mark. Discussion?
I'd just like to commend the board and the administrative team for working diligently on the budget. We're making progress on it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Unanimous? Any additions? Item 1B, any additions to the agenda, please? Item 1C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Seeing we have no visitors here this evening, we will continue on. Item 2A, election of board officers for 2025. Do I have any nominations for Board Chair? Mr. Welsh, please.
Yeah, I'd like to actually propose a slate of candidates. I'd like to propose Bob Paszkiewicz, Chairman; Ricky Bortz, Vice Chairman; Lynn Landolina, Secretary of the East Granby Board of Education.
Second, yeah.
I'll move to close nominations.
Okay. Are there any other nominations before we close those? Okay. We have a motion.
Close nominations?
Close nominations from John, second from Mark. Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Closing?
Closing.
Yep, all in favor. Thank you. Opposed? Extentions? Hello, Varshney?
Hi.
Okay. Vote for the slate for Board of Education Officers, please. The slate consists of Mr. Bob Paszkiewicz as Chair, Mr. Ricky Bortz as Vice Chair, Ms. Lynn Landolina as Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
And a show by hand shows that it's unanimous. The vote passes, the slate passes, and congratulations to Mr. Paszkiewicz, Mr. Bortz, and Ms. Landolina.
Thank you, everyone. We have a lot of work to do this year. I guess the first thing we'll look at, if there's anyone interested in being a Cregg Council Representative from the East Granby Board of Education. Do we have anyone who's interested in doing that? I may not blame you. I did a poor job this year. They don't seem to do a whole lot for us.
I'm telling them.
What is it?
What is it?
Big rubber stamp. That's all I think we are. It's all it is. Big rubber stamp for.
All right.
I'll say that publicly.
Most of the meetings are online.
Yeah, a lot are online now. Interesting.
I would move to nominate. I guess we're doing that, right?
I don't.
I think they do. Says board elections. So I'll move to nominate Drew Miam now as our Cregg Council Representative.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion to the second. Okay, second from Mark. Any discussion or other nominations?
I'll move to close nominations.
Got a motion to close?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. All those are in favor of Drew being our Representative to Cregg, the Cregg Council. Signify by saying aye, raising your hands so we all can see it.
Aye.
Aye.
Drew, you're voting for yourself.
You can't say so.
Might as well.
Is this part of the hazing?
And Drew, I'm happy to send you the link to the website, and you can kind of look at their past meeting agendas and minutes. It might be helpful.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew, for volunteering for that. Item 3, Student Representative Report. Good evening, ladies.
Do you want us to stand up and do it, or?
However you feel most comfortable.
Whatever you're comfortable. I mean, there is a microphone, just so it's above you, Hensika. There's a microphone above you, so it does catch your voices, but we have them over, so whatever you're most comfortable doing is great with us.
Okay. I think I'll stand. I think I've practiced it.
Okay.
And they did practice.
Hi, everyone. My name's Hensika, and I'm going to be giving the Student Representative Report along with the Varshney. I'm going to be doing it for All Grove School and Seymour School, or well, Varshney's going to do it for Middle School and the High School. So the way I divided up my reports is I did an academic section and a non-academic section for each school and grade. So starting off with kindergarten, the students were learning a little bit about how Hadi was produced by reading from Nectar to Honey, and they also learned about sequences and how processes in nature occurred. Additionally, they also did something with animals, and they learned about how animals see themselves in their offspring, beyond just like, you know, their mouths or their teeth. Additionally, through this activity, they learned a little bit about addition and subtraction from the teachers that were trying to combine math and learning about science. In first grade, they also were doing a little bit about animals, and they did a zoo project. In this one, they did a persuasive piece about how animal, what animals should be put in a zoo, and they presented this to the class. Additionally, they also did some financial education, because I know that's something that's going on between all grades, between K to 12, and they learned about producers, consumers, and needs and wants. Additionally, in second grades, they were learning a little bit about what's called geology. This is basically how like snow is produced, what it is, and they also learned some fun facts, like snow can come in pink or gray, which I didn't know. And they also learned a bit about financial education, like cost and change, and they also did a bit more math practice along with it. And for some non-academic events that occurred, there was the Grade 2 Winter Concert, which happened on December 18th. Did anyone go? That's good. Was it good?
Yes. Very good.
And along with this, they also had a Labor of Love clothing drive, which the All Grove School partnered with the East Granby Social Services, and they raised over $1,000 to give back to the community, which is great. Additionally, they also had a program called Love on a Leash Program, which therapy drugs were brought in, which I find really fun. And this was probably my favorite, but on January 10th, they had a School Spirit Stuffed Animal Day, which is basically like a show and tell where they brought their favorite stuffed animal in, and they basically explained to others why it was their favorite stuffed animal, and they basically just showed it off, which I thought was so cute. And this is for parents, but some upcoming spirit dates is on February 7th, mismatch socks, on April 4th, favorite literature, you have to dress up as your favorite literary book character. On May 2nd is tie dye day, and June 6th is dress up as summer vacation quotes. And these are some upcoming dates, which are like in a couple months. January 14th is an early release for teachers in service, January 20th is middle school, February 3 to 17th is kindergarten registration, and February 5th is preschool open enrollment night. And moving on to Seymour School, through the academic events, in third grade, they were learning about forces and motion, and they did this through building vehicles, which is very, which is very creative. I love that activity. And also, they, in third grade, for their literacy, they were doing poems about the gold rush and the fact of liberty, so they could learn a bit more about history and English. In fourth grade, they were learning about weathering and erosion and how natural forces like wind and water can change the environment. And similarly, in fifth grade, they partnered with the Trap Rock Conservatory Program to learn about decomposers such as fungi, bacteria, and worms. And this is really important, they did an hour of code, like all the students in all grades, and they used code.org and something called dance party and music lab jam session. And for some non-academic events that occurred, there was a gratitude mugs program where basically they exchanged mugs with each other and gesture practice for our gratitude. Additionally, they did a couple of other holiday events, like a sing-along and a fourth grade hot cocoa reading. We did a book fair and craft event. And since, I'm not sure if anybody attended, but they did a Beyond the Mic play performance. Did anyone go? No. And something else they did was the Great Kindness Challenge, which is basically through all grades, I'm encouraged to be kind to each other, and there was a ton of spirit days for that. And so just a announcement for any of you, for on January 28th, there's going to be a performance by the Fourth Intensive Drivers for a concert, and this is sort of unrelated, but I thought it was necessary to include. There is a registered nurse called Justine Ginsburg who's giving a presentation about social media on February 20th at Seymour, so if anybody wanted to attend, since I know we were having a conversation about that a couple of meetings ago, that's a good opportunity. Thank you. I'm going to be handing it off to Varshney now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Varshney, as Hensika mentioned, and she also mentioned that I'm going to be doing middle school and high school. Sorry if my voice sounds a little rough. I've been sick for like the past few days. So middle school December 2024 highlights was that the Daughters of American Revolution, or the Dar Ward went to Kenzie, who won second place in Fabio Phillips' chapter essay competition with their fictional historical fiction piece about pre-revolutionary T-tax protests in North Carolina. And then the middle school also had an ugly sweater day, December 20th. Students and staff showed off their school spirit with festive ugly sweaters, creating a joyful atmosphere. The seventh grade also had a community building activity. Activities included remiss and ignore, like their reindeer games, where students competed in themed challenges to build communication skills and holiday cheer before winter break. And East Granby Youth Services also had an obstacle course in the lunchroom, where they surprised students by setting up an inflatable obstacle course in the gym, and this is one of, part of one of their monthly visits, which focused on developing skills such as social and emotional. And the middle school also had a spirit week and a PJ day for a cause. The middle school and the high school both joined, raising funds for Kennedy Kids Children Center for Cancer and Blood Disorders, and both the high school and middle school had definitely fun participating in it. And sixth grade science, in Mr. Dor's class, they dissected lampreys, also known as vampire fish, which was a big hit with the students, and by the pictures, it seemed like they had a lot of fun dissecting. And then January 2025 highlights for the middle school was that they had a social media awareness assembly. Trooper James White with East Granby Services held a session on responsible social media usage, emphasizing the importance of online safety and understanding digital footprints, which is most likely necessary with the conversations we've had, as Hensika mentioned. And then Dr. Faulkner's class, they, Mr. Bob delivered salmon eggs to her eighth grade class, allowing students to learn about their ecosystem and environmental stewardship. And that was the middle school update. For high school, the December 2024 highlights was Spirit Week and PJ Day as like the middle school. We also had Crusader Madness. This event kicked off basketball season with games, scale contests, prizes, snacks, bringing the school community together. We also had annual Spanish caroling, where the AP Spanish students went around class to class singing Christmas carols or Spanish carols, spreading cheer. And then we also had AP Calculus holiday songs, which I was part of, and it was definitely really fun, so we went singing AP Calculus carols, such as derivatives songs, and it was all really fun. And the high school chorus also performed at Bradley International Airport. The high school, the high school chorus spread cheer with their festive songs. And then upcoming events in January is the Snowball Dance on January 25th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very comprehensive, and in all your comments that you tell us, really paints a picture of the engagement in the school, and we like to hear those things, because we get bogged down many times with policies and budget, because that's what we have to do, so we really appreciate the presentation. Thank you much again. Okay, moving on, item four. I fear something has to move. Item four, Chairperson's Report. Committee assignments for 2025, we'll have those for our next meeting, especially for Drew. Just go through, we have a policy committee, facilities, communications, negotiations, and curriculum committee, and a budget committee is composed of all of us. So if anyone wants to change committee or be added to another committee, please let me know, and Drew, if there's any of those you're interested in, just send me an email. If you wish to stay where you are, please send me an email as well, if you'd like to stay.
What's the general, roughly how many committees does each board member are part of?
All of them.
Two to three, four?
Probably a couple, and some of them, you know, are busier than others. Negotiations go through.
And I have to abstain from that one, so.
Okay, but there they've got right now, we haven't, this past year, there wasn't much with negotiations. When it comes up to a contract renewal, then they're really pretty busy with it. Facilities is a real important one, and that's where, you know, we have to spend a lot of money to keep the buildings up and running and have them being safe. Policy is one thing we are this year, and I talked with Missy about it, getting all our policies together. I know we've been moving things over to shipment in Goodwin, and we want to complete that process this year, so.
May I make a comment, Chairperson?
Certainly.
I think it might be helpful for the chairs of the subcommittees if we can schedule kind of a standing date, because then it becomes a regular meeting. Anything else is a special meeting, and you can't add to the agenda, so sometimes it makes it difficult if we, you know, don't have it set ahead of time. But if we can set dates, and we can always cancel if they're not needed, but if we're able to kind of, and I think it helps with planning as well, you know, for all of us.
Absolutely. Yeah, so if there's a certain, you know, third Monday of the month or whatever, if we try to look at getting some consistency for our meetings, just makes it easier than trying to see when people are available.
Are we still forming a committee for potential building?
The town is, we.
Is that going through the town?
We requested them, and I know that's been on their agenda, yeah. So she'll probably put some committee together for that. It's not a building committee, but it is a committee, and I would imagine it'll be a couple board members certainly invited, yeah, to. Good point, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. And the other item I had there was I forwarded everyone a letter from the Ellington Board of Education about the new Connecticut paid sick leave law, so if you haven't seen that yet, you can get a chance to take a look at that. And that ends my report. Item five, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. When you sat down, you had a packet in front of you, just some three kind of backing documents, and actually, Varshney and Hensika, you have them also. The third paper is Nezdeck. At this time every year, we get a report from Nezdeck. The complete report was shared with you in your board packets on Friday. However, I think really just focusing on one document, that's the one I made a copy of, I believe it's page four, which is the projected enrollment. I really only have one comment to say, and we're going to be, this, all this data shows is that we will be remaining, you know, flat with a few ups and downs, nothing significant. I know we've shared this before, many districts are, you know, diminishing their student overall numbers. East Granby is not projected to do so, and it's also really important to note that this is prior to any builds in town, because at the time that this, the data was collected, I think there were three building permits, you know, at the time. So Nezdeck is rarely, very good if we need them to kind of go back and redo some numbers if there's been a big change in your community. So we're kind of looking to see where we are with the new builds in town. So at least, at best, at worst, whatever, however you want to phrase it, we will be remaining flat, and don't expect any down numbers. Yes, Mr. Welsh?
So it looks like in '22, '23, we came out of, you know, COVID, if you will, and hit a pretty solid number in terms of our overall enrollment, but then in '23, '24, there was a 4.8% drop off. Was that just the luck of the draw?
Yeah.
Couple of grade levels were just, birth rate was down, or East Granby population was down, particular age bracket, grade levels, is that?
Are you looking at the school year '24, '25?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm looking at '23, '24.
Looking at a different page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at what I passed out. I'm sorry.
She let me pass this out.
Okay. That's fine. It's okay. It shows the same data.
I can do the same number on this.
Okay, yeah, and I have that.
You know, does Nezdeck publish, so we always get the projections for the future, do they publish results based on their projections from the past, just to see how accurate they were, and then if there was any major outliers, kind of a description of why that was off?
There was a time where our numbers were a little skewed. I know a neighboring town had an issue that they spoke with them about, and to try and figure out why. I mean, we're always actually pretty accurate. There was one year, so I'll give you an example, for some time, we do not offer pre-K for all of our children, correct?
Yep.
However, we do offer for any child that's identified. So our numbers kind of vary between the actuals with all of the children, and some years it was just the children that we had for special education. So we had, we went back and changed all that, so it was very, so it was consistent in the way that we reported. So then they can go back and change the subsequent data that, you know, pertains to that particular year.
I mean, just looking at this year over year, we can go back and then look at our actual enrollment and figure it out, but before I wasted my time to do that, I'm curious if they already did it.
They do not do it to that level. I've done it at times, though.
Okay.
Because I, that's how I'm able to say they're pretty accurate.
Yep.
Because I've been able to go back and look at our system, what we actually had versus what Nezdeck had reported, we should have.
You mentioned that at the time that they created these tables, there was three building permits. Do you know what they're up to now?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I actually wrote to the town a bit ago, and I'll be, I'll meet with Eden.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And to be honest with you, I have to learn a little bit more, because with the builds, you know, they're not independent homes, so there's a building permit, but then it's going to really depend on the, I mean, once they get their CO, it's the, you know, the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Because they pull a permit for the entire complex, but then it's the number of units that.
Correct.
They would do them for each of the duplex units. Most of the ones that they're doing right now are duplex.
So I do expect us to have an updated report at some point.
Sarah, theory behind why grade seven is so large, it just normally sticks out. It's just a popular.
Are you talking year after year, or?
No, no, no. The current grade seven, if you kind of go diagonal, they're 80. It's just kind of pokes out a little bit of eight as well, the seven and eights.
Yeah. Mr. Nandum, I've been here for 19 years, and I've had a graduating class of 52, followed by a graduating class of 82.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I do. Is 82 the record?
I don't know. It's probably, it's probably close. It's probably close.
2012. What happened in 2012? There's been like 49, 50, 51.
We had a 40, 48. My sister was 48 in 1998.
I think that was the lowest.
1998 was 48. Any other questions with the information we have right now from Nezdeck?
There you go.
Thank you. I will move on to item 5B, Resignation and Retirements, please. I do have three retirements to share this evening. The first is a current middle school English Language Arts teacher, Mrs. Mary Munsel. Mrs. Munsel has taught in East Granby since 2009, recently taking over some of our high school English classes as well. Mrs. Munsel has two pretty grown young, you know, daughters, and certainly we wish her the best in her retirement and her future. We thank her for her service to East Granby since 2009. Second retirement I'd like to announce is another English Language Arts teacher, Mrs. Kate Stewart. Mrs. Stewart has been in East Granby since 2004. I think it's, it might have been solely, if not definitely primarily, as eighth grade English Language Arts teacher. She will be following her husband to the West Coast for, where he has a job opportunity. Again, we thank her, and we certainly wish her and her, you know, three daughters and her husband all the best. Thirdly, we have a retirement of somebody who started, this faculty member started in East Granby in 1987, Mrs. Marsha Chambers will be retiring. And I would like to just take a moment and just read a little poem from Mrs. Chambers that she wrote. "I have been lucky to teach in two East Granby schools, where I was able to give students the tools to play and learn, to be friendly and take a turn, to learn about Egypt, the clouds, and much more. I've taught so many students that I still adore. From sixth grade to third and kindergarten last, 38 years sure went by fast. I've had great colleagues that I now call friends, which will remain even when the teaching ends. I wanted to let you know it's time for me to go, to find new things to do, but East Granby, I will always think of you." So just like Ms. Munsel, Ms. Stewart, we certainly also wish Ms. Chambers the best and her future endeavors, and we thank her for her, well, it's 38 years of service to this town.
I'd like to thank all of them for the service.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to thank them all. A couple of them very close to my family and to my son, especially seeing one of our retirees as a thespian on stage on a couple of occasions. Just great to see the enthusiasm that all three brought, and I think that poem slash rhyme there kind of sums up the type of dedication, but big word, the love that all three of them had, and I would just applaud them all.
Were there, were there any others that you're not able to announce yet in terms of numbers of retirees that are expected?
I expect one more that I'm aware of, and I should be able to announce at the next, the next meeting.
These are all completing this school year?
Correct. Thank you for asking the question. They are completing this school year. Okay, item 5C, Bus Update. We have made some changes to one bus. I have spoken to and met with John Hipsher, who's the owner of M&amp;J. We have made a shorter run on Bus 4 in particular. Bus 4 has been arriving to Seymour School at 8:20. Tomorrow morning, they're doing a few more runs. I want to be sure that any changes that are made do not inhibit any other bus, so it's extremely important that current pickup times don't change, you know, significantly, and also that we don't, you know, by fixing or making a remedy for one, have an issue on another bus. So we were able to make one shift already that was very, very positive for both the families that were impacted, were fine with it, as well as, like I said, getting to school more consistently and shortening the run by about 10 to 12 minutes to Seymour School, and then it'll carry on to Fall Grove. I'm hopeful that we'll see that with the other two, but I want to be 100% confident that any changes we make. But I want to be 100% confident that any changes we make are only going to be obviously positive for our community. Mr. Hipsher has, you know, offered if necessary, he's happy to speak with any board members if he wanted to have a small meeting or he's happy to talk. But he's been very responsive and I've been pleased this week.
So is this for the afternoon also?
The change was made for the afternoon also.
So what, can you share what the change is? Just curious, like what's different?
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, we, there's a couple, there's a couple stops that are no longer on Bus 4.
Okay.
Does that give you enough?
Yeah.
Information, okay. And it doesn't impact any of the other buses?
Are we still looking to do the change for next school year? Where we do the, I can't remember exactly what we called it.
So one thing I've spoken to Mr. Hipsher about is giving us a preliminary run early with seven buses versus six. I do think it's important also with whatever's being built, if we kind of know what that looks like as well. Some of the questions is, you know, is it a, is it a, well, it's a big, so obviously it's not going to be an end stop. The buses are going to have to go into the neighborhoods is from what our conversations was. Because it goes back pretty deep, I believe. I haven't gone in it. So those are some things we're going to have to look at.
What, is that a neighborhood?
Yes.
I, please don't quote me, is it Bramble Bush?
Oh, the new one?
Yeah, the two new.
Oh, I know, he's driving around.
Why wouldn't that be the same sort of pickup as Schoolhouse Landing? Why wouldn't it be a pickup at the main gate?
My understanding is Schoolhouse is too narrow for the buses to turn around in there.
I haven't driven through there yet, but I assume with new construction that they're doing sidewalks throughout that whole development?
I think they, I think it was.
There are sidewalks on their plans.
Set up that way, yeah.
So it'll depend on the ages of they can come to the beginning of the.
Well, we would be consistent in whatever we do with our other neighborhoods, for sure.
Yeah, because we have those other neighborhoods and I know a couple of them we don't go into. I don't know if we go into Granby Village or not.
I'm not sure.
Is that going to be, does anyone know is that going to be a public road?
Granby Village, Granby.
Granby Village? Granby Village. That's all.
Yeah, I'm picturing the bus.
I didn't think we went through there because it's private. That's what I wondered if Bramble Bush is going to be.
That's the same thing with Schoolhouse Landing. It's a private, it's not a city street.
Then we probably shouldn't go in there.
And we probably wouldn't, yeah.
Yes, Bramble Bush, I guess that would be a factor. If it's a town road, it's different. But if it's private, we don't, here's, we don't go into private roads. And even it went up on Route 20, I mean, some of those people walk quite a ways. Those apartments are coming out, they're getting on the bus of Route 20.
Right, Turkey.
Yes, absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that just comes to the little turnaround.
Because if we have to run all through that new complex, that's going to take the bus five more minutes with all the pickups and everything. So we'll see.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it?
That is what I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to item six, committee reports. Lynn's not here tonight, but she did tell me today she's interested in staying on the policy committee, interested in staying as chair. And she's planning a meeting for January 16th. And she was going to, I guess, meet with you tomorrow, unless you met with her today and talked to her. She was going to meet with you tomorrow to post that. Hey, any, anything else from anyone on policy? Okay, budget, we all met last week and been working on the budget. We'll be voting on that soon to be able to send that budget request to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, the budget drivers will be presented to the Board of Finance. On the 21st. So if anybody is around and wants to go to that meeting, the expected date to present to the Board of Education will be January 21st, which is our next board meeting, which.
That's January 1st of 2025.
I'm sorry, thank you. January 20, Mary's like, wait a minute, I got another week to do that presentation. January 27th. What that does is gives us two dates before the Board of Finance gives us directive. So after the 21st, the Board of Finance's next date is February 19th. So we have two board meetings before the 19th that we will present and discuss the budget. Okay, so that'll be, the goal is going to be January 27th. I'll be working some late nights to put that together. And as well as, it also gives us February 10th as well, if we need it.
I'm sorry, February 10th, regular.
It is. It's the last one before the Board of Finance expects our presentation, which would be on February 19th.
So the meeting on the 27th, which is our optional, would be a budget workshop? Or would it just be on the agenda as a discussion?
Discussion of the budget.
Okay. And the same holds true for that February?
10th, if we need it, for that.
Well, that would be a regular meeting.
Sorry.
It's a regular meeting.
But that again would be at 7 o'clock, wouldn't be at a special start time?
Unless something happens and we need to have a special budget meeting party then. Because right now, they're both scheduled for seven, regular board meetings.
Okay, thank you. Anything new from curriculum?
So we did not have any pressing situations in December. So we did not have a meeting. We do at some point need to discuss the capstone requirement. And the fact that the state no longer requires the capstone as a graduation requirement. What we are going to do about that within policy to align with the state.
Right, because our graduation policy requirements includes capstone. So there will be an impact to our graduation requirement policy.
So should that be something that's added to the next policy meeting agenda then, at this point, since we've discussed that?
I think, I think the board, I don't believe we voted on what we want to do with capstone. So that we would need to do first, and then we would follow through as needed, you know, with the policy changes.
So do we need to add that as a recommended action for the next meeting?
Sure, that would make sense, I think.
I'm sorry, you would want to, wouldn't you want to have a recommendation from policy? Or from, sorry.
From curriculum.
From curriculum and then bring it to the board?
Which I think we did a couple of meetings ago.
We discussed it within the curriculum. We did not make a recommendation within curriculum, other than that it needed to be discussed at the board and in a public venue.
Right, which we did.
Which we did in December.
Right.
And I personally don't have a clear recollection on, I believe we decided for certain that we're going to remove it as a requirement. There was a lengthy discussion about removing it as a requirement going forward from after this year. I believe that's what we landed on.
Yes.
Right.
Continuing with it through this year and then afterwards.
So.
Starting with 2025, 2026.
Shouldn't we just look at doing something at our next meeting now? Because the sooner, sooner the better, right?
Right, because if we have to do curriculum, then policy, that'll be too long.
Curriculum and then.
Yeah, so we can add it to next agenda item.
As a change in policy. So no need to spend time on it in the policy meeting, other than whatever it takes to look up which specific policy we're rescinding at the date.
So are we looking to have first read next meeting? Or just?
No, next meeting we need to vote as an action item to make the change.
Okay, so we're not going through policy at all, we're just coming right.
Correct.
Okay, anything else? Okay, seeing that, I'll go to Facilities Committee.
Facilities, we met last week, early in the week. We have some updates on the door project, whether the architecture is done. And the construction aspect of it is going out for RFP in February. And we're expected to be done in September, that project. We also discussed irrigation. I was away last week, but I'm going to touch base with Green Machine to get an update, to see where we stand. I believe most of the mechanicals and everything are complete. And then during spring, prior to baseball, practices beginning, they're going to start up the, do the test fill and also finish the electrical with control orders. I will get confirmation from them. We discussed rentals and classroom, additional classroom space as needed on the rental space. We're going to get some quotes from some outside cleaning agencies for events to charge a cleaning fee. And we'll consider different fee structures based whether those entities are in town or out of town. And on the classroom side, based on the Bramble Bush and everything, just to get ahead of the game, we're looking at cost and analysis of modular classrooms as well, just so it doesn't surprise us. And I think that's about everything from Facilities.
I have a couple of things to add that happened after the meeting. Just some repairs, Ray Carlson, our Facilities Director, regularly stops in and meets with Mary and I. We've had a few items recently, the snow blower, tractor and snow blower at the high school needed repairs in the amount of 3,000. All of this is coming out of our operating maintenance. Fire alarm work for 3,000. There's a one or two trees at Seymour that really needed to come down. They were on the tree line, but hanging over like the end of the building. So not only is it an issue, a concern for the building, but also it's a, it's a walkthrough as well. So those trees needed to be removed for 2,000. And we're currently awaiting some information. We have a compressor issue at Seymour School that happened last week.
And I also forgot HVAC project, and that's expected to be complete September 2025 as well. And I believe now, in addition to what was originally proposed, now we're looking at doing some real time monitoring that will be able to, should satisfy some of the annual requirements for testing, that we should alleviate some of that budget for annual by doing the real time testing.
These are air quality.
Yeah, so we just got to confirm that it will replace some of the annual stuff. So that will help out a little bit too.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just add that I did meet with Sea Tech Solar at the middle high school about considering putting solar on the buildings. I was able to show them the old roof and a new roof, or where they, they could put it. We would have to contact the roofing company, but I'm waiting for a report back from them. But it was interesting when they, they wanted to see the electrical room. When I brought them into the electrical room, it was like something they'd never seen before. They couldn't believe how hard it was. So, but, so we're waiting on that, and they're a local company. Next item, negotiations?
Nothing new.
Okay, nothing new.
Anything.
Right.
I think we've got something coming up starting in the fall, though, right?
I think so.
Yee-haw.
The only thing I'd say negotiations is please make sure you read the Ellington letter from their Board of Ed, because I think it pertains a little bit to that. Okay, last item, anything from Communications Committee?
No.
Okay, we move on to item seven, recommended action, approved December 2024 financials. Go to the motion on the floor, so Mary can discuss it?
I'll move to approve.
Drew made the motion. John, you're seconding it?
Sure.
Okay.
You made a motion, Drew?
Yeah.
Kick it up next time, okay?
Okay, Mary.
Make a motion.
The annual financial audit conducted by Mahoney and Sable is now completed. And there will be a report on the financials at the Board of Finance meeting on January 21st. So if you're around and you want to hear of the entire financials, they are reporting that on their meeting. The pay, as we talked about, the paid sick leave law is effective in Connecticut, January 1st, 2025. It was something that was, I think, the 13th hour that came through, or they slipped it through. Everyone thought that schools would be exempted, but right now we are not. Just a few key changes. What it is, is the accrual of paid sick leave employees will now accrue one hour of paid sick leave for every 30 hours worked. Part-time employees are eligible as long as they work at least 20 days in a year. Employees may use their sick leave in influence of one hour up to the first 40 hours. After that, it returns back to the contract. The biggest issue is with the certified, because they take half days or full days. So we have to redo all our systems to work that out. So we're still in the process of that. We hope to send the letter out to all employees tomorrow with the letter that we have to give from the state, which is very legal ease. And then we'll do a little summary on what it means. It's really not changing their sick time, they still get more than the 40 hours, it's just they're able to take it. The reasons for paid sick leave have been expanded, so they can use it for their neighbor, who could be their family. They can use it for mental health, it's very abrupt that how they can use it. So we're hoping at some point it's actually repealed back, because school always get more than the 40 hours. So we think we should be exempted. We are continuing our budget process for fiscal year 26. We review the presentation and the budget drivers, which we will be discussing at the Board of Finance meeting, as we stated earlier, on January 21st. And looking at the financials, the only one that really comes out is the org number 563, which is our private school tuition. And it's pending to be running over due to our recent student enrollment. And that's all I have, if there's any questions.
Mary, could you just send me at some point the proposed paid sick leave law as it pertains to, lack of a better term, Connecticut education, public schools? I'm assuming it's blanketed across the board for anyone working in the state of Connecticut.
They had one a few years ago that exempted municipals. And now they added the municipals and construction and a few other, they still exempted a couple of other ones.
Right.
They just expanded, they always had it, now they're giving it more.
So if you could just send me, you know, an email preferred, the paid sick leave law as it would pertain to East Granby Public School District, just so I could see it. Just love to see it.
Just a general question on that. Is that, would we expect either Shipman and Goodman or CAE or one of the entities that we pay into, is that something that should have been brought more to the forefront for attention? Something that's going to impact, as it will, more ahead of time? That way, school boards could have gotten together and kind of pushed back before it signed into law? I mean, that's something that one of these more entities should have foreseen and made as a, it just kind of came out of nowhere. Unless you follow day to day politics, which I don't think any of us.
But CAE does put out a legislative proposal, I don't know if you.
I mean, I peruse it, but I mean, it just didn't, I.
There was no, no fair warning in terms of.
That's what I mean, this, I mean, something with this magnitude, I feel we should, like, every board in the state should have been made aware.
This is not uncommon, though.
Okay.
This is, this is one example, but it, it was with the teachers, like lunch, that was like right at the end of a certain time. So.
When was the bill proposed versus when was it signed into law? I'm just curious how much time it was sitting there that somebody should have picked up on it and made all Connecticut school boards aware of it.
Some, a lot of them, what I read, that they really didn't think municipals or schools were going to be part of it till the very end.
They just not that portioned in at the end?
That's what I had read, that I read. What I was told, it was kind of at the end, that we thought that the schools would be.
I think the interpretation was schools would be exempt.
And they were not.
Okay.
So I think that was part of the reason why it was not.
Yeah, if you look at the Ellington letter, they're requesting to repeal it because of the benefits we presently give. But I agree with you, this CAE probably would have had some wind of it long before any of us and would have been helpful. Because I know that some boards were concerned that we didn't hear anything about it.
They have some lobbyists for things like this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the financials? Seeing none, all the motion to vote, all those in favor approving December 2024 financials, if I sing aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Question carried unanimously, thank you. Item 70, approved school year calendar for 2025, 2026.
Yes, thank you. So in front of you, when you sat down, one of the items is a draft of a calendar. I'm going to explain what looks a little different than what we talked about last meeting. I asked Marjorie, just so we have some reference, to go through our neighboring districts to see what their calendars look like for next year for both the. see what their calendars look like for next year for both the October Columbus Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans' Day, as well as Election Day. And that's that color code on the the second sheet, the grid. Our conversation, I'm going to start by early dismissal time because I don't want to forget it. We, I brought up the proposal to have an earlier early dismissal. We are much later than, you know, pretty much every district, which is problematic for two reasons. One, if I'm in the position to look at whether to call it early dismissal, sometimes we're almost too late where I have to think about, are we coming in at all? Because our early dismissal was either 12:30 and 1:30, where most districts end are around starting at quarter of 11, you know, to 12. The second advantage to having an hour earlier would be for professional development. It would give our staff extra time on those early dismissal days for professional development, which now allows us to reduce one of our early dismissal days for the upcoming school year. So my proposal, and it is on this calendar in front of you, if you look at the school hours, it does reflect what I'm proposing, where middle high school early release is at 11:30, Seymour School, Augrove School about an hour later, 12:30, 12:35. So that's kind of one segment that plays in the calendar, Mr. Welsh.
So at the, I'll just use the middle high school. But so at the middle high school, if there's going to be an early release, what's the duration of each class period then? What's the time? If we're going from 7:40 to 11:30? I'm just curious.
One thing we need to figure out is lunches also, though.
Right. We need to have lunch. And I'm assuming we have to have lunch the same amount of time as we would have on a normal school day. But I'm just wondering what the, what the periods, you know, the class period times would be shortened to. That's all.
I don't have that direct answer. My understanding is at the elementary level is they keep the the academics piece, so they'll, they might not have like the second recess, you know? So it really depends on what their, the middle high school obviously is a little different because it's a straight seven periods.
Right, right. So that's, that's what I'm asking. I'm, is it, it's not straight math because I have to subtract out first from the three hours and 50 minutes of of class of school time. I have to subtract out lunch period. And then, of course, I have to subtract out X number of minutes in between the various periods. So I'm just wondering what the.
Couldn't you also say you're getting an hour less and you're going to divide that hour or less over the seven period of instructional time? So it's a seven hour?
I'm back to the difference between 2:10 and 11:30. Forget that.
Oh, 2:10 and 11:30, okay.
Yeah, I can, I can figure an hour, but I'm just, I'm just wondering now what the class time would be for each of the seven periods.
I can ask one of the administrators to do the math on that while we continue on the conversation. That's okay?
That'd be great. Because with lunch, it sounds like it's like 21 minutes. That's, that's just me roughing it up. Math is never my thing.
Right, because you still have to do the 30 minute lunch.
Well, for staff, so it really depends on how you structure the day. I mean, it seems to make sense because then we would have the whole afternoon for PD. Like, I know a lot of other districts, because lunch would theoretically start really early, like for the younger kids, they'll do it at the same time and have lunch like in a classroom for.
I'm not as worried about Augrove or Seymour because, you know, you're in the classroom. And I would think that there might be, you know, sort of some teacher discretion as to, you know, what we might do on a early release day, I would assume, but I might be off on that.
I think the periods would be a little bit closer to 30 minutes than like the 20 minutes earlier because it's going to be like 200 minutes for instructional time. We have 2:30 minutes and then 30 minutes for lunch. If we divide that over seven periods, it's going to be like 28.5 minutes or like 28.5 minutes per person. But I think now we have like about.
You said 20.5.
28.
28.
I think it's less than that.
That includes passing time?
Yeah, and lunch, I subtracted lunch as well. That deserves a period for each period, it's 28.5.
All right. Honzaka, thank, Honzaka, thank you for that. And I'll also have them do the math as we continue the conversation. Okay. Additionally, the conversation, I think, needs to focus around the last PD day and the conversation between the October 13th and November 11th. Last meeting, we talked about, the board discussed having October 13th as a professional develop day, development day. That day does not align well with the PDEC calendar in terms of the teacher work with their professional goals. November is kind of the target for that. So if the board favors a day of observation or observance for November 11th, you know, would we be able to have professional development on that day? That would give the 4th and the 11th back to back full, full dates.
Because I want to mention, it's 26 minutes because I forgot to include for passing period, so it's going to be like 26 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So then the 13th would.
Would be a day of observance for everybody.
Like no school for it, like it is right now. It would just keep as is.
So that would stay.
Yeah. Which kind of makes sense. I mean, people are used to that.
So the only difference would be November 11th. The teachers would report, but the students would stay home.
If that's what the board chooses, yes. PDEC committee, again, the the recommendation that came from PDEC was, we had the the 20th, actually, was an early dismissal for professional development. But at the time, we had the 11th as a full day for students and staff. So if the board wants to have that as a day of observance, the request would be to have it a day for professional development.
And that's one extra day than this current year, correct, for PD?
No. Nope. It's three full days this year. It'll be three full days next year. It'll be one less half early dismissal day.
Oh, so did we do that this year or before? Oh, we did one in October, right?
Yes. Yes, our current full day PDs this year, we have one in August, one in September, and one in November. So for the upcoming year, August, and then there would be two in November. The teachers found the one in September too early in the year.
Can, why am I having a blank? Why is October 2nd no school again?
No, before.
Thank you. I knew there was a, I was like, why can I talk? I gotta write that down.
It's small.
Oh, right there.
Read the final.
I need new readers, just so you know. My prescription keeps getting out. Where is it? Over here. Okay.
Anyone else with any questions or comments or?
I don't know if this is going to be like a favorable comment or whatever, but how many, how many teachers or people that work in the school system are vets? Are veterans?
I don't, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I like, I think the importance, and maybe other people may or disagree or not, but I think it's important that like we take that time and we recognize those people and not just for the students to have it off, but for all of us to kind of take that moment to recognize them. I don't know. I just, I find that very important, but that's my own personal opinion. And I think that's kind of where the associate, the vet association came from as well. So I guess that does make it tough because we still need that.
The teachers have to come to school either October 13th or November 11th.
So either or.
They have to have, they have to come in one of those days, correct?
Sorry, what were the two days?
For 11th, November.
Right, oh, okay.
They have to come in for one, but they're both.
For the 13th or the 11th?
Because remember, remember, just to give a little history, we used to have both of those days, days of observances. When we voted to recognize one of the Jewish holidays, that was the the floater there.
Right.
It was.
And I think we discussed the 13th because it's kind of like no school, school, weekend, no school, school, early release for middle high school. I do get, though, the 13th. Like, I, I just think that's just been a longstanding day off for as long as I can remember. So I think for probably staff and just kind of, they're used to that. And it's just not very, it's not very consistent to start the month of October, especially if you're in middle of high school.
Mr. Welsh?
Sorry. So it was a month ago, so you have to cut me some slack here. But I thought when we were talking about early release previously, we were talking about early release that was due to either weather or foreclosure of the school. And now it sounds like we're using early release for parent conferences, teacher in service days, early release in general being moved to the earlier, early release times? And that's.
That was the conversation.
Right. But I'm sorry, but that was the conversation?
Yes.
And I was walked away from that erroneously, thinking that the early release that we were talking about to try to make it consistent with other districts was relative to weather and or school closures due to other unforeseen circumstances?
It was both.
What's?
It was, it was.
I'm still a little puzzled by it. Was that your understanding?
The proposal wasn't just for weather related. It was also.
Right, right, okay. So it was, it was for any early release, not just weather or again, unforeseen circumstances?
It was for any, but I remember you having concerns.
Yes, well, I still do then.
My question on the early release for professional development, does that, by doing that, does that help us eliminate another day of early release or a full day off?
How many were in 2020? How many are in this school calendar, the half day PDs?
There's five half day professional development current year.
Current? And there's five for next year on this draft?
No, there's four for next year. So we would go one less.
So the first.
Am I counting wrong?
The first day, is that, the first day is considered one, right? So that's five.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The heart throws you off.
Yeah, I wasn't, so then it's one more. We have one less for the upcoming year than we do for current year.
Because I thought you said five this current year, right?
Current year, we have, we have the first day of school for students.
So I got five for this year, too.
Yep.
So the addition.
There's six for current year, if you count the first day for students.
Okay, so there's six for current year and five.
And five for next year, proposed.
But by, if we accept the extra hour, that would be five additional hours, which pretty much replaces one half day. So we're about equal for this year and next year.
Correct, in terms of time.
Okay.
Can you remind me why we have the two additional days? Because don't we need 180?
We're still doing 182, right?
Yes.
We're still doing 182, yeah. We're special. We're special. I was just curious. We're special. That's.
That's what East Gramby Board has decided. I'm guessing that's been longstanding at 182 days.
I wasn't sure if there's a contractual on that.
Well, it is contractual at 187 for teacher days. It's five days more than students.
Then we're only at 181. Then you kind of get it.
That's right.
Anybody have decked a 181?
Well, I was kind of going along the same lines because Veterans' Day is important, and I do also recognize Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day. A lot of families go away for long weekends. I know I have myself spent, it's been something a lot of people have done over the years. I would hate to take it that way.
Set your PD on the 10th and everyone off on the 11th, long weekend. Go to 181.
I think that has negotiation implications if we go to 181.
Oh, yeah. Sure does.
That would have to take, that would have to be in the next contract.
That's a costly day.
So we could do that this time around, but next, if you keep that in the back of our head.
Well, it doesn't mean you can't open up negotiations on one specific topic with them. I mean, you don't have to wait two years. It's up to the board, you know, if they want to discuss it.
Wait a few months.
What's that?
Starts in the fall.
Yeah, it's in the fall, but it's for the following, the following year, right?
It consists of year, isn't it?
Right, you start negotiations in the fall.
Wouldn't actually impact until.
The following year.
Twenty seven.
So if you want to drop to 181, that's waiting a long time. That's the only thing. I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, if you want to try to, you know, bring it down to 181, that just isn't an item we could negotiate with the union, unions.
Okay, I do have an answer from. So three hours and 50 minutes, if the length of school minus 30 minute lunch is three hours and 20 minutes divided by seven periods, 28 or 29 minutes. Without lunch, it would be 32 to 33 minutes each. Then you have to, of course.
It's not taking into account passing.
I was just going to say, you need to do a passing time, which is a couple minutes.
She was spot on.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Different topic, but just something that came to my mind. There was a topic that we had discussed about changing the the periods and how that whole thing was going to occur for next year.
Well, you can, well, I don't know if it's for next year. You're talking about the schedule, the bigger.
The bigger schedule, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is a different topic.
Okay. That's coming, that's still.
They still need, yes, but that's.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the numbers that you said now that I still wasn't in this pen?
With a 30 minute lunch, 28 or 29 minutes, then you take the passing time, so about 25, 26.
So the middle school, high school, the last bell rings at 7:40, I'm in class. Right?
Three hours, 50 minutes.
Three hours and?
50 minutes.
50 minutes?
7:40 to 11:30.
Yep. And what's the passing time? Is it two, three minutes? Is it four?
It's not more than four. Is it three minutes? In between classes, it's three minutes, right?
Passing time.
Sorry.
Seven periods.
It starts, you have three minutes.
And there's also three minutes for lunch?
Yeah. It's not very far to go, right?
Kind of overlaps a little bit.
Not very far to go.
Yeah. And even if they're, even if it's like kind of far, like if you have a classroom with the other side of the building, teachers are kind of in it.
Yeah, which is nice.
As soon as they see you sweating when you come in.
Per the state, what constitutes an instructional day? Just in terms of early, unplanned early.
There is no hours for an instructional day. That's a 20 year old law.
Okay. So as long, if you show up and you get an unexpected snowstorm and release an hour and a half later, it still counts as a day on.
It does. It can be five minutes. Like if you think the buses come and they bring them right home.
Okay.
We had that happen once. No one even got the bus.
So theoretically, you could schedule a full year of half days?
It's the overall hours.
Okay. Not that, I'm just curious about the state mandates.
Yes.
Looking for loopholes.
Well, where are we right now? Do we want more information? Do we want to table this? Do we want to resolve it tonight? Are there any questions?
Was there anything else to the calendar? Was that?
No, that was really, everything else we already discussed, you know, last meeting.
Wednesday afternoon finalized by?
I mean, the earlier, the better.
Typically finalized by past years.
January.
No, I only ask that because Marjorie had sent the curriculum committee notes, and in here it said, another request from the PDEC is to create a new half-day PD in November during the week of the 17th for personalized PD work.
That's if we were in school on the 11th.
Trading that.
Oh, that's trading it, okay, got it, I thought that was in addition.
Trading if that was an instructional, a full-on, regular instructional day on the 11th.
Because the calendar we first showed, which came from PDEC, was the 11th in school and the 20th as the, that early dismissal, November 20th.
So can we do the 11th in early dismissal?
I mean, I guess to go back to the veterans, I know some of our veterans are here, and I know that the celebration that has happened at the schools, I've heard is really good feedback, of the kids being in the schools, so...
Well, yeah, but if it's...
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm asking, so that would be...
When the school has been out on the 11th, then that event is done the day before.
And that doesn't impact any of the veterans' ability to be present to the schools on that day, that was, I was just trying to...
Well, she said in here that they took, right, they would, if there was in school, they would observe, they would do like the parade the day before, the day after.
Actually, the parade is the way.
Or, well, what I...
The event itself.
Gotcha.
All the in-school activities.
My question was just to the availability of the veterans on a day that's not being recognized as a holiday by other people with their employers and such. Okay.
I mean, as a, as a schools, we'll do whatever, what works in terms of the recognition program. I mean, we've been in school for years, most of the schools in our area are in school, years ago when we weren't in school, we did it either the day before or the day after.
So is it, some people want them in school November 11th, is that what you were saying, Whitney, before?
So what I was saying, so right now it's looked as the teachers will go into school, but the students won't, right? So my thought was, and where I'm coming from is, we're celebrating Veterans Day and giving recognition to those, the veterans are the ones that are probably teachers or janitors or what have you, right? Not the kids, and that's a day that we should be celebrating and showing recognition to them. I, I just think that's important, that, you know, they have served our country, we should at least give them some type of recognition.
Would you be able to put out a quick survey to staff, just gauge temperature?
I guess I'm confused in terms of staff, I have a couple, because I did ask, actually, I have a, I have a couple.
If you have a couple, can you ask them what their feelings are, if they...
But wouldn't it also apply if, if I'm a student and my dad's a veteran to not be in school, like, I'm not sure why, we're just looking at the staff.
No, because right now...
Because she's saying that the students have the time off, but you're saying the staff has to work that day, so the veteran faculty have to work on Veterans Day.
If they're teachers, they're working on the in-service day, and the students are...
Right, so Whitney's saying everybody would have it off, not just...
So, so those that are, the faculty or those that are part of the staff have to work on the day that others are getting it off, and there is no observance for them, they have to work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think I, I think I...
I agree with the logic that says either the district is closed on Veterans Day, it sends the right message to young people to understand the importance of veterans in United States history, and that's not just our past history, but our future. It's important to recognize everybody that's served, and to sit there and ask teachers that come in, if there's a teacher that's a veteran, not even if they're a veteran, just if, it's, it seems silly if we're going to recognize the importance of what is a federal holiday, and the importance of recognizing, again, what veterans have done for our country, and everybody should be off, and it should just be a day that's observed by the district.
So I think the alternative would be then...
Why don't we do, why don't we give them the day and just extend the day in June? Can't we do that? Give November 11th off too, and we could just extend the day in June, and we would get out right now, June 15th, June 12th?
That would be that Monday?
Is that what it is?
We still wouldn't have a PD day, right?
I thought about that, and then I saw the last day was already a Friday.
It's the PD day.
Well, you know there's going to be a snow delay, it's going to change that.
Yeah, but I think they're trying to get that day in, is that correct?
The PD day.
PD has to be done, so is that...
Either way, we need to have another day in November then for professional development.
Right, so...
Does it have to be November?
November aligns best with PDEC, with the, because the state has their goal conversations, as you know.
Didn't we sort of talk crazy? Why don't we, didn't we talk crazy about it being the 26th or the 23rd?
So the 26th...
I thought we had talked about the 25th as being an early release.
No, we talked about the 26th giving it as a day off instead of early release, we used to give it early release.
Right now, it's being shown out, right?
Right now, it's being shown.
There was a conversation of the 25th originally.
I thought there was a discussion.
And then last month, we said if we have a half-day, then people are just going to take that Monday and that Tuesday, if it's a half-day on Tuesday.
That's absolutely going to happen, right?
But I...
Especially with a new law.
I need to, because by contract, our holidays, though, we can't give the 13th, October 13th and November 11th, that's an extra holiday, we have to work, the staff need to work one of those two days.
Right, right. Unless they want to... An agreement.
Wait, they have to work one of those?
It's because we gave the other, because we gave the observance to the Jewish holiday, so now there's an extra...
Right.
Trying to capture them all, there's an extra holiday, one too many.
Is that an option to go back? Is it too early to have a PD day on the second, of October 2nd?
Yes.
It is too early, because that's already like in policy, or does that...
Well, that's a Jewish holiday.
It's a Jewish holiday.
It was a lot of staff that were particularly concerned about having that day off.
Okay.
At least that was my impression when it was put on the calendar.
Is that what, is there a lot of staff members? Is that...
That was what was presented to the board when it was added to the calendar.
I think we agree that if it was there in a week, we'd observe it, but we're not going to do like an observed Friday or Saturday or a Monday.
So do we do what Ricky said, get the pulse from the staff, say, hey, we have these three days, what, what, two out of three? I mean, is that opening, I don't know, I'm just, I mean, my, I mean, if we fall past practice, then it would be for everybody to go to school on the 11th.
Yes.
And you can look at it, the opposite of what we were talking about, you can look at it as, at kids who, instead of sitting at home playing video games, they're learning about Veterans Day, and then kids who have parents as veterans, I mean, I'm sure some parents just pull their kids out of school anyway, they can celebrate their family, I mean, and at least they're learning about it, not just getting the day off to sit there while the staff is working, when they should be getting the day off.
The way it's presented, here, there, they're at home.
Right, so I'm saying...
They're not, they're not home because we're, as a district observing Veterans Day, they're just home because it's a...
Right. But we, but what Missy's saying is we can only do, right now we have...
If you, if you show all three of those on the calendar as such, and they have to, I think somebody just said it, that's two out of three, and they can then, if they're a veteran, they can observe, have that day off, and they go to one of the others, they actual, actually are in school on one of the others. If they're not observing the Jewish holiday...
Can we do that?
You're doing what?
I don't think we can, can we do that on the calendar, you have an option?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
You just said that, as it, as it was, they have to be in school on either the 13th or the 11th.
Right, all of them, though, we have to do it like everybody.
Is it all or nothing, or can you pick and choose?
It's, it's a paid holiday, they have, one of those is a paid holiday, either October 13th or November 11th.
No, he's saying, can they choose, like, everybody signs up, I'm going to take this day, I know, I think we have to have a calendar, right? Like, you can't, people can't choose.
Well, no, because right now, like, the school will be closed on one of those days.
Right.
Right.
I think you let it fly, I think they let it fly the way it is true. You know my preference would be for it to be...
Yeah, I think we're trying to appease the teachers' calendar instead of doing the right thing.
No, we're not trying to appease the teachers, I'm trying to align with some professional development that needs to have it in November.
Well, this was a recommendation from the PDEC, so I would, I would assume they've talked to the veterans?
I mean, we can give it another day in November, that's, that's fine, but I'm trying to not make the November count, no, month so choppy.
Right.
And we did go to the 26th as a full holiday before Thanksgiving, but even if we go back to an early dismissal, we don't, we don't gain the PD, because that's just the early dismissal before a holiday.
Can you make that a PD?
The 26th?
Yeah.
We cannot, because in the contract, the half-day before the Thanksgiving and the Christmas break is a half-day for everybody, including staff.
So when we say teacher in-service early release, what's the time that our teachers are in professional development?
They start immediately after buses leave.
And if we made the 20, I'm sorry, contractually, the 26th is a half-day, contractually?
Early dismissal, I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
There's, there's two on the calendar.
So our teachers are, are entitled to leave at the early release time?
That is correct.
Because that would be an easy solution, wouldn't it?
Well, that's where the conversation with the 25th came.
Right, right, but we all know that...
So it has to be in November?
I mean, the state, the state requirements don't actually say that, they say schools should do their best to offer, but it doesn't, like, technically, you don't even have to have to, like, in, I mean, that, that's the thing too, where it doesn't have, I mean, but the thing is, would you want to put in December? No, look at December, you know, that's a hard thing, there's nowhere but...
So October.
January 2nd.
Why, why in school? Why do we have the 4th?
Oh, yeah.
The 4th is Election Day, and this year, we are working with our surrounding towns, like we did a few years ago, for cross-town professional learning, because pretty much many districts, if you look at the grid I have stapled, are in school for professional development on Election Day.
You know what'd be really, I'm sorry, I'm going to offer two minutes, Friday the 31st?
What, what month?
October, Friday the 31st, it's Halloween, and November, the Tuesday, November the 18th. And the 11th is a holiday.
So then we would all be in on the 13th?
That's shortest, is that shortest to 181? And then we need to push it out in June?
Say it again, John.
No, yeah, yeah.
No, we don't need to add anything, and we don't need to add...
You just add it.
Add a PD day to the 31st?
Yeah.
And then you don't need one, again, for the 11th.
He's saying either or.
Right.
No, then the 11th, the 11th would be in the day of observance.
Right. And then we move the PD to October 31st or November 18th?
Well, then you, no, you move, no, you don't do the 4th, because if you're meeting on the 31st, you know, two, two school days later, you're doing it again, no. So you do it on 31st, and then you do it on the 18th. The 11th is a holiday, it shortens us to 181, we go till June 15th.
But the 4th is already off, so you're saying 31st...
No, the 4th we would be in school, be a regular school day. But they wanted... Has never been bargained for.
But they want that because...
They want to do a curriculum.
Because nobody else has it.
That was a date that they were looking at to do the...
Well, and the other districts, because some of the teachers are doing cross-district professional development, because if they only have one teacher of a certain subject, then they line up with somebody else that's in a different district that has the same day for PD.
And everybody else is doing it on the 4th, the election day.
Well, if we're, if we're doing what all the other schools are doing, then why don't we have school on Veterans Day, everybody else does?
Right, am I reading that correctly? Every school on here has school on Veterans Day.
Because the veterans came forth and they would like to have it observed.
Right, but right now it's only the kids having it observed.
Right.
So...
I'm saying it's either all or nothing.
Right. Unless, that's, I don't know, this was their recommendation.
If that's, yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's coming from, that's coming from the teachers.
I just didn't realize, yeah, we, but we can't have all three, that's still the issue, because we can't have all three, so that's why I'm saying if we can't have the 2nd, the 13th, and the 11th, and we're trying to compare it to other schools, then why don't we do it the other, look at all these schools, let's school on Veterans Day, so then why don't we just have...
So I am surrendering at this point.
I get what you're saying, I'm just saying, we're trying to, they're, they're saying they want to follow what other schools are doing, so if we follow what other schools are doing, then...
I'm, I'm surrendering with a little disappointment, how's that?
Yeah.
No, I, I hear you.
I will.
I don't...
Kind of devil's advocate, also being a veteran myself.
Right.
I could, I could make an argument for both sides, being in session, I, I enjoy being there with the students that day, and we want to observe for the veterans, I can see it crystal clear on both sides, but the other point of view would be, how many of these parents are, I mean, especially at younger ages, they're just going to know they have a day off, right? How many other parents are going to say, this is for Veterans Day? Now, we hope they do, but they're not.
Right.
When they're in school and they're doing the curriculum with the veterans coming in, they know it's Veterans Day.
Right.
And they know it's a special day.
Great.
So that's the other side of the coin, from my perspective, I enjoy being there with the kids, yeah, I miss out on, there's some veterans' events that you could go to during the day, but I really enjoy being there with the kids as well, so. It's, I can see either way, I understand both sides of the argument, so, go ahead.
I think I like what Amanda says, either all or nothing, I don't think it's...
Are there veteran events in town that we can work around on the 11th?
I mean, you guys kind of created your own event, so...
No, what I'm saying, if there are other events that veterans attend, is there something we, maybe the morning doesn't work the best?
Now, I don't know, Mark had mentioned that some of the stuff is going away, that might, if it's going away, then my comment, I rescind, but...
Well, I would hope...
No, what, what, what's been discussed for the Veterans Day event is the parade that started during COVID, the discussion is to have it go away, because the kids in the younger, in, in Albrom and Seymour don't get anything other than a drive-by, it's the middle school and the high school that get the veterans to show, what we're trying to do, I think, is have it a more coordinated effort where we have veterans go to each one of the schools to participate, and it does away with the, the parade.
Because you don't have time to do both?
Correct. Logistically, it's, it's far more challenging, so, that's been the discussion with the, Mr. Mandralla.
And don't the veterans prefer not to do that on Veterans Day?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, but I would think, Ricky, even though they're not doing that, I would think the schools are still going to do Veterans Day-related activities.
I mean, yeah, no, I mean, if it's, they're in session, you're still going to have enough veterans who would show up.
Exactly, they're still going to learn, is what I'm saying, even without that, I would assume the school would be dedicated that day to teaching about Veterans Day, so they know what it is.
I can go with that, right?
Yeah.
First, we thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, Whitney, I, I agree with, with what you, your thoughts on the 11th. I mean, I would, I would have school on the 13th before the 11th, but, but I understand it also makes a long weekend. People have expected it. But I would have had that as being a day off for kids and have that be a PD day, and have everyone, everyone off on 11th.
Or like you said, just put the last day of school on the 15th, and if it happens to stick there, it might be a low attendance day.
But that, that doesn't work though, right? Because we have to have the holiday thing. We have to have, then it's what we can't.
Essentially, you're giving them another, an additional paid holiday outside of the contract.
Right.
Because there's certain holidays that are listed as paid holidays.
Say, if we didn't have the 2nd, you could do the 10th PD of October and then the 13th.
But is the 10th too early? Because they, they said that the 13th is too early to have professional development.
No, no, November, the date in November is optimal. I don't think October 31st would be terrible. But then we have the 4th there.
And October 13th, though, is not an option for professional development.
October 13th?
Yes.
It's a little on the early side.
Okay, let me ask the board. Do you want more feedback from the teacher association on those days and their thoughts? Because I know someone brought that up earlier.
I got one more silly thing to throw.
Go ahead.
Okay. You keep these, 4th and 11th is in-service in school, and on the 10th, at the middle high school, you have a, fill up the gym with an assembly. At Seymour, you have an hour and 15 minutes before dismissal, you fill up the middle school gymnasium, and at Algrove, an hour and 15 minutes before dismissal, you fill up the Algrove gym, and you have local veterans and/or other current military come in and do presentations at their school.
Well, it's been a while since I was actually back at the younger schools.
And I'm saying this theoretically, Mark. I'm not saying.
No, I, I'm.
I'm not picking out.
When they had, when my daughter first started at Seymour, and I would go, it was similar to what you described, but it was first thing in the morning.
Right.
It was earlier in there, and they had the veterans go in, a few got up and spoke, and there were certain things that were presented, et cetera. There was another group that, I never went to Algrove, so I don't know how that was. But I think they're talking about trying to do the same thing again, where you have a group of veterans, and, and those that are able to attend, we divvy it up. If you have children there, you could go to this one, that one, or the high school, middle school. But each, each school would get a group of veterans, and however, Dave Mandralla is the one that does a lot of this.
And they were doing that on the 11th?
No, it was on the 10th.
It was always on the 10th.
It was on the 10th, yeah. I actually bounced out of work to come, and then I would go back to work.
Right.
Yeah, I know Algrove had an assembly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so if there was, you know, if there was a way that the district could coordinate, making sure that.
You observe the event?
10 November, that, that there's an assembly at each of the three buildings.
Yeah, or, or whatever it is. There is some sort of, like, to, my mind.
So what, where does it leave us for the, for the 11th, then? I mean, we can do this.
It's a teacher in service, it's a teacher in service, just the way it's written here.
I think we should still get feedback from the veterans' teachers to make sure, to Whitney's point.
This is coming, I'm sorry, this is coming from our teachers.
Well, from the PD committee, but that's the group of people that we don't, I don't know. If Missy was reporting, yes, they talked to the veterans, this is what they want, then I'd be on board.
I gotta think that this is the second or third calendar that we've received, that this, that they have spoken to.
I mean, there would be nothing to, that would prevent a veteran from taking a day, just like we have people that celebrate different religions that take the day that we don't recognize on the district.
But on a PD day, that's required by the state?
Right, when they need this time.
Yeah.
Right, that wouldn't be a great day to be taking a break.
I assume it's frowned upon to take a personal day on a PD day.
Yes, but people do it for different reasons.
Yeah, could I make a motion, Bob?
Yes.
Table further discussion, and then we take this up at our next, at our next meeting, which is coming soon.
What would you like me to do? Well, actually.
Your second for that motion? Okay, Mark for the second. Okay, discussion on it.
Yes, so, so we've heard a lot of different things, right?
Yeah.
So it seems like the, the staff that is, that are veterans, or are sons and daughters of veterans, or whatever their connection to military service might be, may or may not have an objection to being here on November 11th. So I would just want further information that anybody that falls into that category, those categories plural, would have no problem with having that 11th as an in-service day for teachers, no school. And I'd also like something coming from your office, the superintendent's office, saying that there will be an observance in all three buildings on November 10th.
Okay, any other discussion? My only comment is, if we are closing school on November 11th for teacher in service, that we at least call it that we're closing because it's Veterans Day? I mean, I don't want somebody saying, you're closing only because of Teacher in Service Day on November 11th?
Yeah, but that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
I don't want to, sure, I don't think we should sugarcoat it when we're not. It's, it's.
But it's also how, why do we pick, why do they pick November 11th?
That goes to Whitney's whole point.
Right.
I, I agree. I, I just, I don't think we should call it Veterans Day. It's not, the teachers have to go to school.
We're not honoring that.
We're not honoring it. It's a teacher in service.
I mentioned the date of the 18th, you know, move it by the week. And have everybody just in school.
Those are the things.
Oh, yeah, I think people agreed with that.
Have the day off on, what are you saying, John?
Oh, because it's another holiday.
Have the day off.
It's a holiday.
No, 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 he's saying everybody go to school on the 11th. He's saying everybody go to school on 11th, and then the 18th is the PD day.
Right.
Well, we have, we have a motion to table it. So we're not, we can't discuss ideas. We can discuss whether you want to table it or not. Anyone want to discuss tabling it or not? Okay, then we'll vote on tabling. Do we want to table this until next meeting? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Ricky, did you say aye?
I, I just wanted one other discussion point, and it's more for, I was just curious for the U.S. Postal Service for postal holidays. Veterans Day is the only postal holiday that is not closed in Connecticut, and all those green check marks are kind of odd. It's literally the only postal holiday that is not observed in Connecticut schools.
Right.
It's weird.
It's a federal holiday.
It is a federal holiday.
Federal, federal holiday.
And it's the only one not observed, and all those green check marks. Now that I see that it's the only one, it's a little odd.
Yeah, I'd rather be open on, I'd rather be open on Columbus Day, which we don't call Columbus Day anymore, and that Veterans Day off. But we tabled that till next time. We voted on it, so.
And it's, and it's clear when we, when we negotiate with, with our larger bargaining groups, that we look at that, and we start to wonder about what days are really important for the district to have as holidays.
Kind of put a note in my.
Well, to say for the following year, it's almost a conversation before we get this, okay, what two of the three do you want?
Yeah.
Kind of conversation.
So is that the question we want Missy to get from the teachers? What two out of the three do you want?
I don't.
No, I think John gave what he.
I don't know why it should be a discussion for. The T, I, I do and I don't, and I don't want to sound rude or disrespectful in any, any manner whatsoever, but I think that we should be doing what's right for those that fight for this country. And if that's the only federal holiday that, Ricky said, that is observed, then that's what we should be doing as well. I don't know. I, I.
But the problem is, we can't observe the 11th, the 13th, and the 2nd.
I think then that's when we need to go back to discussion next time, that we have this come up in.
I don't think it's going to change for next year. If we want to look at.
Not for, not for next year, but moving forward after this. Like, we'll figure this out now, but then the following year after that, I think that we need to have a bigger discussion.
When we get into negotiations next time, that will certainly be a talking point for us.
Right.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and, and the idea, I mean, everyone's looking at the 13th of October, but it's not what it was.
No.
The 11th is a federal holiday.
Yeah.
13th is still.
Well, moving forward, the staff might say, hey, next year we wanted it because we're just used to it, but in two years from now, if that becomes the norm, maybe they'll be okay, you know? See what they're.
So can you just clarify what you need from me?
I don't.
It was John, John, what, what did you?
I was just, I just want to, I want to know whether or not on the 11th, that there are staff members that would be looking to observe that and will call in sick, use their,
Oh, yeah.
Use their, um, paid sick leave law, whatever it is.
So staff members that are veterans?
Right, or, or any kind of connection.
They're active in the guard.
Anybody, any staff member that was, would want to have that as an observance, just get him that field, whether or not.
So it doesn't matter if they're not a veteran, though?
Doesn't matter.
I was just saying, just do Google forms. Send out Google form in the staff.
I, I know. I just need to be clear, because I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. So what do you?
I'm just.
Because we talked about veterans, but now we're talking about anybody who wants to observe that day.
We're talking about staff members that have a reason or want to observe, a want to observe that day. That's all. I mean, everyone can come up with a reason, but, you know.
And then you send you.
And then, and then part two of that was that, that I would want to know that the district is going to observe in the three buildings on the 10th.
Right, that would happen.
An assembly of some sort, bringing in someone, doing video or big Zoom meeting or something.
Doing what we've, we've done in the past.
Yeah. Some.
Before COVID.
Some recognition and presentation to our school, schoolchildren, the importance of veterans in our country's history.
And that's my point of why I want to recognize it as Veterans Day, if they make that off, not as an in-service. That's all. This is semantics. Okay? Let's move to field trips, or easier.
Okay, we have, in our packet, we have a field trip request for next April vacation. This is for April
Oh, where is that?
Of 2026. It was in your pack, your, your packets, that?
It wasn't.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies. So let me start over. We have a request for an international field trip for April of 2026, which is the spring break. I don't have the exact date. It'll be dependent on the calendar being approved. It is to Italy. It will be 10 days. They will go through EF Tours, which is the company that we have been using. They will visit Rome, Florence, Pompeii, Sorrento, and Capri.
Wait, sorry, say that again, Rome.
The cost is $4,759, and then probably like another $100 for transportation.
Is it four, how much was it?
$4,759.
Okay, four, seven.
Plus tip and transportation.
Transportation not meaning airfare, or meaning airfare?
That would mean transportation to, by charter bus, to Logan.
Gotcha.
Which would be about another $100.
So it's basically plus bus and tipping?
Correct.
And who is this for again?
This is, oh, Mr. Dudek and Ms. Palmer. They've led several of the trips, the international trips in the past.
High school.
Those are actually two social studies teachers.
Is this open for all high schoolers?
It is open for high schools. Is this East Granby High School? Yes.
When was that again?
That would be for next April vacation.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, sorry, did you say no cost to district?
Right.
You said no cost to district.
I did not, but I can say that. No cost to district.
Then I would move to approve field trip to Italy in April 2026 as proposed.
On the second?
Okay, the end of the second. Any other discussion?
Go ahead.
Questions on it? Questions on it? Good. Those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye. Opposed?
Wait, I have one question.
Okay.
On the discussion part there. Um, that's, that's okay. Does that pricing include trip insurance, and are we requiring them to have trip insurance?
Yeah, so I actually asked Mr. Dudek. I haven't heard back. I know there's some, said some things in his family. We have required trip insurance. My question was, is it through EF Tours or on their own?
Okay.
Okay.
So that's not necessarily resolved yet, but that's okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But we do require.
We will require trip insurance, whether it's in one fashion or another, it will be required. Okay, thank you. So, I'm sorry, carry on with the.
Good. Any others? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, item D, approve softball co-op.
Yes, item 7D is to approve the softball co-op. I did put in front of you what the co-op looks like. This is taken exactly from the tennis. From the tennis co-op that we had used in the past. There is a date of January 15th, that the co-op needs to be sent into CIAC. My understanding is our conference, the NCCC, sent it in on our behalf, and it would be a co-op with Windsor-Lux for girls softball.
How many girls did they have on their team?
Okay, can we get a motion, and then we'll discuss it. Motion. Whitney, is that a motion to approve?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Your second.
I'll say.
Okay, Mark, now, now, questions, comments, Whitney?
Jumping ahead. Um, how many, how many girls made it on the Windsor-Lux High School team? Do we know?
I don't know.
Oh. And we got eight on our team, or?
I think it was eight, our conversation.
It was floating. I saw a couple of girls at the Veterans Day pancake breakfast, coming in to help. Yeah, I was floating between six and eight.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Mark, weren't, weren't we at our last meeting, when we were talking about one of the other communities?
Yeah, we are not aiming to co-op with.
But to Mrs.'s point, you can't do that unless the other community is in the same situation.
Okay, and they have.
And going to Granby, they have plenty of girls to field the team right now, so, I mean, that would be the, the optimum, because they start in Little League, they play Little League together and people like that.
Yep.
But it's just not, timing isn't there.
Okay.
Okay, my only, my comment or question, it says East Granby Athletic Department's going to pay Windsor-Lux $200 per East Granby student athlete. Wouldn't that be the parents, as they pay to participate, like they do if they participate in sports here?
Yes.
That's not what this agreement says, so I want to make sure that the parents are paying it, and not us, because it's possible.
I think the parents will pay East Granby, and then East Granby pays.
Well, well, Ricky, there could be a problem, because it's, it's possible that I could have reached my family cap from small sports and winter sports.
Another topic we need to.
You know, I, I really think for any co-ops, that should be extra, and the parents, that shouldn't have anything to do with what they pay for our sports, but I, yeah, I want to make sure that someone doesn't say, well, I reached my family cap.
That's a toughie, though. That's a toughie, though, because if we're going to say we offer the sport, then we have to, we have to keep to the, to the policy, don't we?
Yeah, but if you have, if you have, like, the co-op football, they pay extra for that.
So in practice, the cap is a cap unless it's a co-op?
It's just like when we did co-op tennis here, Canton paid us for each student that participated.
Right, but we don't know what they.
That's, yeah, but our policy doesn't say that. I, I mean, if we had softball like we've always had at East Granby, the parents are paying those dollars to us. Now, we're sending kids to Windsor-Lux, and, and we're going to pay for it. It doesn't make sense, part of the.
If we had, I'm sorry, if we had a softball team and we had nine players, they would pay, their families would pay $200.
Unless they've already reached the family cap.
Yeah, so I don't see the difference.
Many of them have.
I don't see the difference here, because if we had nine players and it costs, and, and we determined that $200 was the appropriate pay to play, it's $1,800 bucks, right?
Yeah.
But. But if people have already reached the cap, right? So the district's paying that difference, same thing here.
I think it's, I think it's, I think we actually come out on top.
It's a separate discussion.
With this.
We do.
Because if you do it per.
Because the actual cost.
Per athlete, it's going to be higher.
Right.
The transportation, that's not even going to cover transportation, we kept it in district.
Absolutely.
That's true.
$200 a player?
Plus the coaching staff.
And even if it's.
Even if, even if they reach their cap, it's the same if it was in district, and it's going to cost more anyway, if it was in district. So I don't, I don't see an issue with this.
Coach. I would say to your point.
Home of players.
Bob, though, we should revisit the family cap and the.
That's one thing.
I think that's a separate, that's a separate discussion to that, but to this, I don't think we're losing money on this, because it's still going to be costing less as a sport expenditure for girls' softball, it's costing less to pay out than it is.
So it is your policy.
But, but even here, if I haven't met the family cap, why is East Granby paying for my kid to go play softball?
We'll still chart, because.
We're paying inbound money going just redirect.
Yeah, they're still going to pay.
They're still going to pay us, but the contract between us and them, we pay them.
It's redirecting the money.
Okay.
Our policy still takes effect if they have to pay us.
We collect, participate whether it's cooperative or.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if I reach my family cap, they're not going to be collecting.
But they wouldn't pay if it was in district.
Then we're going to pick up the fee for them to go to Windsor.
We're still doing that anyway.
It's the same thing as if we were funding our own teams.
Yeah, this is cheaper than funding our own team.
Yeah, this is cheaper than funding our own team.
Now, how about transportation to get to practice each day, are they on their own?
They are.
We're contracting it out for them.
We won't get any heartburn on that, because don't we run bus for, in the fall for football and swimming?
We have one bus that we use as part of our chef grant for students for open choice, and it just happens that the girls' swimming and cheerleading are all on the same bus.
With football?
Last year we, correct. The tennis, when we co-op with Canton, we didn't provide transportation. We have, they used to call one-person teams, now they have a different name, but it's three or less on a team. Hockey co-op, we don't provide transportation. Wrestling, we have wrestlers, we have boys swimming.
So by doing this, we're also going to have, going back to the budget, because it is, we're saving because we don't have to pay the coach anymore.
Right, so. Bus suits, umpires. Yeah, $200 a person's a bargain for, on our side.
Arbiter, all that fun stuff.
I'm sorry?
Just everything, yeah.
I mean, hopefully, hopefully the numbers come up in, you know, in, in subsequent years, but for current budget, correct.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to co-op, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Oh, okay. Item 8, superintendent, agenda items for future meetings, we have superintendent's mid-year evaluation. Any board members have anything else they'd like on the agenda?
Capstone, we added, right?
Capstone.
Capstone.
We tabled the calendar.
So the calendar?
Yeah.
You'll update us with how that goes?
Oh, with the other runs.
Can we keep the bus on?
Expansion of bus board.
Okay, comments from visitors, seeing none? Make a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Oh, Mark, quick.
Second.
Who's the second from?
Drew.
Drew. You're slow. I got here too early.
I got here too early.